Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to this very special meeting for many reasons. Tonight, we are joined by the McCracken County Fiscal Court to take care of some business that we've been working on together. And so in order to do that, I am going to call our meeting to order and ask our city clerk to call roll. And then the judge can do the same to get us started. So city clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Abraham? Commissioner McElroy?
Oh, you're muted, Commissioner McElroy. Nope, you're still muted.
Present!
There you are!
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present.
Okay Judge Clymer?
Alright, so I'll call to order the McCracken Fiscal Court meeting December 15, 2020, joint meeting with the city and Madam Parker, you call roll please.
Yes sir, my video has been stopped but I'm here. Commissioner Bartman?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm here.
And Judge Clymer?
Here.
Hey, hi everyone. It's good to see you. I'm gonna ask Commissioner McElroy if you will lead us in the invocation, please.
It would be my honor and tonight as I end the prayer at this special time of the year, I'm going to end with the Lord's Prayer. So if you would like to join me, please do that. Our dear heavenly Father, we come to you in the holiday season, which is a different one than we've ever been in before with new concerns and new problems, but still very much aware of your blessings to us and we are so thankful for the opportunity to serve. Each of us have grateful hearts, you've allowed us to be part of serving this great nation and this great community that we live in and we are just, thank you so much. And we pray for those who fill our seats for this next year, for those who continue on, that they would have the wisdom, discernment, humility and compassion they need to make decisions that will be brought before them and will move our community forward and provide for our citizens and we ask your blessings on them. Father, we are mindful of those who are fighting health battles and we pray your hand of healing would be on them. We're also mindful of healthcare providers that are exhausted and need your strength and courage and wisdom to care for those. We are grateful for the vaccine and we pray that it would get here quickly and it would make a huge difference in this great pandemic that we've experienced. And we're thankful for the scientists that have been able to do that. We left all our city employees to you, we're so thankful for those we celebrate tonight, but we're thankful for everyone who works hard to the very best of their ability to take care of our city and make it a wonderful place to live, to grow, to worship, to go to school, and we just thank you for that blessing. And Father, tonight as we look to the season of Christmas, we are so thankful that we do have a Savior to celebrate because we definitely need one. Father, we all fall so short of meeting the expectations that we have for ourselves and for one another. And we pray that you would forgive us and that you would save us and we pray that we would be reminded that you are Emmanuel, God with us. And we tonight end our prayer time with the prayer that you taught us to pray. Our Father who art in-
Who art in heaven.
Who would love the- Thy kingdom come, I will be done on earth- Give us this day- And forgive us our trespasses- We forgive those- That pass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from sin. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the- Amen.
Amen. Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Abraham, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Well, thank you. We'll count it out from three, two, one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which is said, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you Commissioner.
You're welcome.
On our end, city manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No Madam Mayor, no additions or deletions.
Thank you. Judge, do you have anything that you need to do before we introduce this ordinance?
Oh my app.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to read item 1A, please.
Post-motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Interlocal Cooperative Agreement Among the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the County of McCracken, Kentucky, the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority and Greater Paducah Economic Development Council and authorizing the execution of a Forgiveness of Debt Agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and Greater Paducah Economic Development Council pursuant to the terms of said interlocal agreement. This ordinance authorizes the execution of an interlocal cooperative agreement to make the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority, IDA, the owner of a certain publicly owned development sites within Paducah and McCracken County, including the Ohio River Triple Rail Megasite formerly known as Riverport West, which is currently owned by the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council and to effect a repositioning of the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority and its role with regard to property ownership, maintenance, development, marketing and management. Further, this ordinance authorizes a Forgiveness of Debt Agreement with the Greater Paducah Economic Development in a total amount of $911,375 related to the Ohio River Triple Rail Megasite."
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So last meeting we heard from our city manager about this agreement. Does anyone have any comments or questions tonight from the city on this item? No? Okay, I guess I just wanna say to the fiscal court that you're on the call with us tonight, thank you all for this, another example of a partnership between the city and the county. Thank you to the city commissioners also for being willing to demonstrate to our community what happens when we come together and work on these things. I have been reflecting a lot lately, as you can imagine, over the last four years. And I also wanna say thank you to the fiscal court and obviously to the city commission for your willingness to lean into some of the major changes that we've made in economic development here in Paducah-McCracken County. These changes were not possible without us having relationship and trust amongst one another. We've seen examples of this fail in prior administrations and so thank you seriously, Commissioner Bartman, Commissioner Parker, Commissioner Jones, Judge Executive Craig Clymer, thank you all so much for your partnership, especially in this item. So if there are no further comments, I am going to ask the city clerk to call roll on this very, I think will be monumental, business item tonight. Okay, city clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. Okay Judge?
Alright, then I ask our clerk to please read our item B, the ordinance.
It is hereby ordered that pursuant to KRS Chapter 67, "The second reading and adoption of Ordinance Number 2020-18 shall be conducted in summary format as follows: An ordinance of the McCracken County Fiscal Court approving and authorizing the execution of an interlocal cooperative agreement among McCracken County, Kentucky, the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority and Greater Paducah Economic Development Council, authorizing the Judge Executive to execute all legal documents related thereto, including a Forgiveness of Debt Agreement between McCracken County, Kentucky and Greater Paducah Economic Development Council pursuant to the terms of said interlocal agreement. The action taken by the present ordinance authorizes and approves an interlocal agreement that repositions the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority and its role with regard to property ownership, maintenance, development, marketing and management, and authorizing the execution of all legal documents related thereto. It is hereby certified by the McCracken County Fiscal Court that the present summary represents an accurate official statement of the main points of and contents of Ordinance Number 2020-18. A true and correct copy of Ordinance Number 2020-18 shall be made available for public inspection in its whole and complete form by the McCracken County Judge Executive's Office. Any person desiring to inspect Ordinance Number 2020-18 shall contact the McCracken County Judge Executive's Office via telephone at 2704444707 to make arrangements or delivery of the same."
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
I'd like to-
Make a comment if I have any dog, we're after you.
Okay, well I just wanted to take a moment, number one, and reflect on how we got here on this particular agreement. And I agree, Mayor, this is monumental agreement. This puts us, puts our communities on a path that we know we need to be on and it puts our county government and our city government together in more of a lockstep mission for the next 10 years and beyond that. So there've been a lot of people who've worked on this and I guess I wanna give some shout outs to Glenn Denton who served as the attorney for a subcommittee of the county. We reached out to Mayor Harless and Bruce Wilcox on this issue in the summer and Mayor, I want to thank you for working so hard to the very last day of your term. You did not shy away from this in the summer of 2020 during a pandemic, but rather you formed a subcommittee and as soon as the letter was written saying, "Hey, let's work on this", the next day, there were Google documents in my inbox and I had to figure out how to access them. Sandra Wilson served on that subcommittee and Judge Clymer and I, I think I mentioned Holly Hamra who did, I think, carried the water on the writing for Glenn. Been a lot of thought put into this. So what does this do for us as a community? Number one, it fixes a bit of a problem that we felt, we all felt we had, including Glenn Anderson when he took over as the interim director of G-PED. And that is essentially, we were using public dollars, giving the public dollars to board of directors of a nonprofit corporation who was then making payments on debt that was encumbering land that was titled in the name of the nonprofit organization. Didn't make a lot of sense to do it that way and it was thought early on that a better way to do that is to title these lands in the name of the IDA. And by putting the title of these properties in the IDA and then funding the IDA with public doctors, public funding, we have elevated the public voice in how we deal with this public debt and these public lands. We have also allowed G-PED to rid itself of some of the obligations of management of land and some of the debt as we're forgiving some debt tonight, which will allow, we think, G-PED to do what Mayor you have said for four years. G-PED needs to do a better job of doing and that's making the pitch, the sales pitch of Paducah, Kentucky. In the end, I hope 10 years from now, we will be talking about how our IDA may have too much money. We will have a wealthy IDA that is funded and they will be looking forward and progressively to what lands should be bought next for economic development. So I just felt there needed to be some statement of how we got there. We spent some time this summer working on it and I'm glad we're able to get this done. Thank you.
I wanted to comment too, I'm gonna compliment Commissioner Jones and the leadership he's provided on all these economic development issues. I think there's been some issues we've all been concerned about, issues I've been concerned about in the six years I've been on the commission and we weren't really having some problems with how to resolve some of those problems. And I think Commissioner Jones provided the leadership to do that. I think G-PED is now a much stronger organization. It will be able to do a much more efficient job of searching for industries to come here. And I think that they're more open now than what we perceived in the past. Before, we kinda gave them money and we sat back and wondered what they were doing. Now, they're open and they communicate with us well. They've got good new leadership in there that's just taking a new look at how to go about economic development. I think the creation of this foundation or this Economic Development Council, I think it's really gonna be a big boon. It provides input from county and city leaders and I just think it's, I agree with Commissioner Jones. I'm hoping that five and 10 years from now, we're just gonna see stars in the sky for what was accomplished because of what we've done here tonight, what we've done over the last two years.
Any other discussion? I think both of you have pretty well said it along with the mayor's comments. Just on a broader spectrum, now as we end up this year, this is one of the biggest examples, I guess, of our having worked together with the city, our county body, the city governing body, working closely together. We've got a group of people who had mutual interests and drives and goals and gosh, we harnessed together and got this done. And so it's a major event, major progress for the city and the county. So I'm proud of everybody that got behind it. My deputy judge, Steve Doolittle, worked hard and hand in hand with the city manager, Jim Hart. And we had the professional people that helped to guide this and again, as Commissioner Jones said, Glenn Denton and Holly Hamra were there with us getting it all put down, make sure we got everything buttoned up tight. So it's great work on everybody's part. Any other discussion? Hold in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? That carries. And Mayor and city commissioners, we have, we need about five minutes to do one county only thing if we could. And then we wanna say our farewells and let you guys get on with your meeting.
Sounds good.
Alright, so Madam Clark, would you read our ordinance A, please?
It is hereby ordered that pursuant to KRS Chapter 67, "The second reading and adoption of Ordinance Number 2020-17 shall be conducted in summary format as follows: An ordinance amending the franchise agreement granted pursuant to Ordinance Number 2005-10 to extend the term of the franchise. The action taken by the present ordinance amends Ordinance Number 92-2 enacted June 8, 1992, and Ordinance Number 2005-10 authorizing the grant of a non-exclusive cable television franchise. It is hereby certified by the McCracken County Fiscal Court that the present summary represents an accurate official statement of the main points of and contents of Ordinance Number 2020-17. A true and correct copy of Ordinance Number 2020-17 shall be made available for public inspection in its whole and complete form by the McCracken County Judge Executive's Office. Any person desiring to inspect Ordinance Number 2020-17 shall contact the McCracken County Judge Executive's Office via telephone at 2704444707 to make arrangements for the transmission or delivery of the same."
So my- Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? That carries.
I'll move adjourned.
Oh, let me, let me pause just a minute. Commissioner Bartman, I want to say just a couple of things, this being our our final meeting with the city and our final meeting in fact of ourselves for this calendar year. And so I wanted to address, since we do have some outgoing commissioners and outgoing mayor, closing out this calendar year, I wanna thank on behalf of the entire population of the county, 65,000 plus people, for your time and efforts and the commissioners and mayor and interest in development of Paducah. We know, of course, while the city's run by the city commission, the county's run by the fiscal court, we all recognize now, you know, how our interests are mutual and our efforts co-mingle and advance us both, the city and the county, the city being within the county and being the county seat. And so I thank Commissioner McElroy, Commissioner Abraham, Commissioner Watkins for your dedicated service. I suspect that though you're stepping out for a breather, that you're not gone. There's far too much talent and energy individually and cumulatively for you to be missing for very long. And then Mayor Harless, thank you for your incredible energy and your efforts in promoting the city, which obviously, as I say, benefit the county. The Mayor-City Manager Forum of Governments is set up for a part-time mayor, full-time manager. We didn't have a part-time mayor. The mayor was everywhere. I was and more, I'm sure. I can attest that Mayor Harless was consistently full-time and even over time. We worked together and I think moved this community forward because of it. And I wish you, Mayor Harless, and commissioners the very best and I'm sure we'll be bumping into each other as we go forward.
Well Judge, I do wanna say thank you to you as well publicly. It has been a pleasure getting to know you better. Up until COVID, we had our regular meetings every week and got to know each other as friends, I think also, and as colleagues. So thank you for that partnership and friendship and it has been a pleasure. And to all you county commissioners, before you jump off, same thing for you. I really appreciate your partnership and willingness to have tough conversations and to take on these tough challenges together. So it's been an honor to serve with you.
Thank you Mayor.
Judge, thank you for your kind words and it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you in the fiscal court. And I think we've got a lot of things done for the city and county that our residents will benefit from for many years to come. And the future looks bright and I appreciate the cooperation and the spirit of one that we work together well and try to move this community forward. We all have the same goal and that's to move Paducah and McCracken County forward with additional job and educational opportunities and improving the quality of life. And I think we've done a great job and appreciate your leadership and appreciate working with you and appreciate your kind words.
Thanks, thanks Gerald.
And I'll be on the sidelines cheering y'all on. I'm gonna be at that first soccer game or softball game or whatever it is on those fields. Thank you Eddie Jones for the brainchild of how we have been able to do that together. Very, very exciting. One of the things when I was campaigning, I heard the most about, we've got to move our athletic facilities forward. I'm super excited. It's been a joy to get to know all of you, to develop friendships and I'm here, if you need anything from me, I am here and you will see me around.
Thank you Brenner.
Yeah, I'd like to say anyone that lives in their community that's willing to step into this fishbowl and do the best they can, understanding that you got running quarterbacks, you got everybody second guessing, but you do because you love the city that you live in. And I applaud anyone that stepped forward to do that. It's been a pleasure working with our guys on the commission, getting to know the county committee. We're all in the same boat. So as the county moves forward, as the city moves forward, the county moves forward. So it's been a great ride, I've enjoyed it and I speak to you guys.
Thank you Richard.
Thank you.
I guess you're stuck with me for another two years.
Go Sandra!
Any other, any other discussion?
Sir, we need a second.
Oh, I didn't.
I didn't hear a second. Commissioner Bartman?
Oh, you mean for adjournment?
Yes, sir.
I'll second the adjournment, but I wanna echo everybody else's thoughts. Thank you all for a fun two years. It's been really fun.
Alright, everybody wants to go, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Everybody wants to go, say aye. Stay, say no. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas, guys. Take care.
Merry Christmas.
Think we're gone.
Okay, we're going to move forward with our city business. We do have one more item to take care of before we move into some presentations. And that still has to do with our portion of some of the IDA work that needs to happen. So I'm going to ask the city clerk to read item 1B, please.
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Paducah Code of Ordinances, Section 2-562 through 2-564, to change the composition of the Paducah Industrial Development Authority from six to seven members, and allow for the appointment of members in a manner described by the interlocal cooperation agreement as established by the City of Paducah, McCracken County, the Paducah Industrial Development Authority, and the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council. Further, this ordinance removes the restriction that members cannot hold any office, official office, in the city or county, and brings the terms of members in line with the said interlocal cooperation agreement.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. This is just a cleanup item from this, pretty much. Does anyone have any questions or comments they want to make about this? Okay, with that, I'll ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And at this time, I'm going to turn over the program to our city manager, Jim Hart, for some presentations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you could, if you could pull up the plaque presentation to Commissioner Abraham for me. Very nice. Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, as the, as your plaque dictates there, recognition of your dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to the city of Paducah for mayor pro tem for this most recent term, January 2019 until now, as a commissioner from January 2001 to December 2002, and also from 2009 to December of 2018. We do appreciate you for your service. And I wrote just a little bit about what I appreciate about, appreciate about you, Commissioner Abraham. And it's interesting that you use the word love because that's what I think about when I think about you. Thank you for your years of service and your leadership for Paducah. I appreciate your commitment to Paducah. You truly love your city and you fight for the people. Your accessibility and openness to our residents is a testament of your love. I just want to let you know that I appreciate you and I appreciate.
Oh, wow. Thank you so much. You know, misty over here, man. Like I said before, it's a pleasure to serve in your hometown. You're right next to people. You're very approachable. And that's, that's part of it. And I've encouraged my girls, wherever they decide to live, to be involved, whether you're writing a letter to the editor, or whether you're on board, or you're serving as an elected official, find your why and build on it. So I'd like to thank you guys for, my fellow colleagues who serve. It's been great and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Would you pull up Commissioner McElroy? Oh, there's me, my COVID mask. All right. Commissioner McElroy, this, as your plaque reads, "In recognition of your dedicated service and devotion and commitment to the city of Paducah as commissioner from January 2019 until now, December 2020," I do just wanted to say that I appreciate you, Commissioner. You were my spiritual leader over these past two years. And I had something written here for you. When I thought about you, Commissioner McElroy, I just wanted to say thank you for stepping up to serve with a Christ-like servant leadership mindset. Your enthusiasm and passion for growth is second to none. I thank you for supporting the board and team Paducah over these past two years. And as I said before, these two years have flown by fast, but you really have made a lasting impression. You've planted seeds that will be watered for years to come and that are going to grow for generations. I thank you for that.
Well, I'm like Commissioner Abraham. Wow, thank you so much. It has been my honor and privilege to serve. I have learned so much. And I think we have done a lot together as a commission. I have so much respect for the fellow commissioners I was able to serve with. Each one of them loves this community and serves out of a grateful, loving heart and does it to the very best of their ability. And that has been a great inspiration to me. Jim, you have been a true friend and mentor and teacher. I was as green as they come coming into this. And you have helped me so much. Michelle, I thank her so much. She introduced me to, to city government with the, with the Citizens Academy, where the first taste of city government I was able to experience. Our team at Paducah, our directors and our team are amazing. And we are really blessed to have the employees that we have. And I'm so thankful, just so thankful for this community. I've had a whole team of friends that have been encouragers and prayer warriors for me, and I'm grateful to them as well, and grateful for God, for just his blessings on our city and our city government. And it's, it's been, like I said, a tremendous honor. I am very, very grateful. And I am still in the community and ready to help and certainly cheering you all on.
Thank you. And if you could pull up Commissioner Watkins. Hey, you got a double, double bill there. That's pretty good, Commissioner Watkins.
Yeah. Two of them.
Two of you, that's right. I like the one in front of the bill, too. Your plaque reads, "In dedication," I'm sorry, "in recognition of your dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to the city of Paducah as commissioner from January 2007 to December 2012, and also January 2009 through December of 2020." When I think about you, Commissioner Watkins, I just think a dedicated public servant. You know, you've done, you've done city service, not just once, but twice. Also, you provided service through Western Kentucky, through the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and I appreciate you for that. Here's what I came to mind and I wrote down for you, Commissioner Watkins. Thank you for your commitment to Paducah and Western Kentucky for your, for your compassion and your desire to do the best for our residents. You set an example for all of us to follow. I appreciate all you have done for us over the past two years. You truly care about Paducah. When I think about our, one of our core organizational values, every person matters. I think of you, Commissioner Watkins, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. You're very kind. And it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you. You're brilliant and you do a great job. And you work tirelessly on behalf of the commission and the city. And speaking for the city, we appreciate you and all that you've done, and will continue to do in the future. It's been an honor to serve the people of Paducah and Western Kentucky also as state representative. And it's just, it's just a great honor, way beyond what I ever dreamed. I grew up, challenged neighborhood. And I remember one lady that grew up with me telling me one time, she said, of everybody that knew you when we were in our old neighborhood, no one will ever have thought you had been on the city commission. And I said, well, me either. It just proves there's a God. But I do appreciate that honor and the opportunity to try to do some things for the residents of Western Kentucky and the city of Paducah. And it's been an honor to work with this commission. There's a lot of brain power, passion, and character on this commission. And I appreciate having the opportunity to work with all of you. It's been a pleasure. And I'm grateful for this opportunity and what we've been able to accomplish together. I will miss serving with you, but like everyone else, I'll be around and still trying to help any way that I can to make Paducah a better place to live. I'll miss the city employees. We have a great crew, all 300 plus that go in every day and do the work that needs to be done to make this city operate at the high level that it does. And it's a great place to live, in big part because of the dedication of our city employees and all that they do. And so I want to thank them and just thank, again, the city of Paducah, the residents, for giving me the opportunity to serve. A great honor, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate serving with y'all. And God bless all of you. Merry Christmas. And thank you very much. Love you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. If you could put up Mayor Harless. Thank you. Madam Mayor, your plaque reads, "In recognition of your dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to the city of Paducah, Mayor, January 2017 through December 2020." And also, we're able to present you with a gavel. And I just would say, before I get to my written comments, that I remember back when I interviewed here and when I met you at the employee meet and greet prior to and during the interview, I just thought, that's a ball of energy right there. Very dynamic, just enthusiastic. And it really excited me to come here to serve and be a member of your team. You did not disappoint. The words that come to my mind when I think about you, Madam Mayor, are dynamic, intrepid, courageous, and leader. You know, and I've told you this before, but God places us in the right place at the right time. Serendipity is what they call it. You're placed, you were placed in the role of leader at a turning point for Paducah. Your vision and desire for growth is powerful. It's contagious. Your courage is, courage is not the absence of fear. It's acting on behalf of the city despite of your fear. Now, thank you for your leadership. Your legacy will benefit Paducah for generations to come. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Jim. That's very kind. I'm with Commissioner Abraham about the waterworks. I think we might need to have a cry session after this. I do, I do, if you don't mind, just want to share something I was thinking about earlier today. In 2014, Adam and I went on our honeymoon and we went to South Lake Tahoe and Big Sur and spent the whole time outside. We camped and hiked and did everything. And, and we did it intentionally because at that time, we were at a crossroads in our lives. I had just turned down my dream job in DC about a year prior due to a tragic accident that happened to my family. And I remember sitting outside and at a cabin with Adam, talking about how we were going to give back to Paducah because we decided to stay in Paducah. And we started talking about me serving somehow. And we brainstormed all different kinds of lists, you can imagine, board seats. And then Adam said to me, I think you should run for office. And then Alan Rhodes said to me, a couple of weeks later, I think you should run for office. And they say it takes a woman seven times to hear she should run for office before she actually will. And I can count all seven. And I'll tell you, I never imagined running for office. I'm like Commissioner Watkins. I'm not quite sure people would have picked me out of the crowd as the future mayor of Paducah at any point, especially when I was at Ballard Memorial High School. But I had two things I wanted to prove to myself and maybe even to other people. And I've mentioned this before in a couple of speeches, I had two hypotheses about serving. Number one, I wanted to see if it was still possible in America to run a positive campaign, not trashing your opponents, and still win an election. That wasn't a hypothesis that I had. And so in 2016, I did that. And I won. So I was able to prove that hypothesis to myself and hopefully to other people. The second hypothesis was, I've heard so many times in my life that government is a burden, that government is a barrier, that government is there to stop us from doing things, and that government is hard to change. And you always have heard the analogy that government is this big ship that you can barely turn. So my hypothesis was, is that true? And I hope it's not. And so I think, I believe with my whole heart, that that hypothesis has also been proven wrong, and that we have shown that government can be flexible, it can be nimble, and it can serve our community in a way that is meaningful. And I don't know if anyone remembers this, but back when I first took office in January of 2017, I committed to the community to do 90 days of listening. And I did it for several reasons. Number one, recognizing, as Commissioner McElroy said, I was green and I had never served in office. I had never worked for local government and I didn't know what I didn't know. So I committed to 90 days of listening before pushing for action. And I also knew that as a, the second youngest person to be Paducah's mayor, that the community also, while they elected me, was also kind of hesitant for this young whippersnapper who got into office with all that energy, Jim, that you mentioned. And if you don't mind, I want to just read a few of the bullet points. I made a blog post after those 90 days were up. And I wrote down things that I found to be true in those 90 days. And it turns out, a lot of those are still very true. And I think they have driven us in a lot of ways over the last four years. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time here. And I don't have a whole lot more comment, but I just wanted to share some of this with you as a reflection. Number one, I wrote, "We must think and act differently if we want a different result." Number two, dissent is okay. In fact, it's the best way to find real solutions, not rubber stamped ones. Exploring opposing views makes us stronger. Which leads me to say that if we are to be a strong community, we must not seek victory on its own. We must seek to inform decisions so that everyone experiences some loss and some victory simultaneously. That's the true view of compromise I know is available to us. Number three, while we have made great strides in Paducah over the years, we are only just now tapping the surface of our potential. Number four, we will only reach our potential with collaboration and a true sense of community. Number five, we can't keep ignoring that over 24% of our population lives in poverty. Just a few more. We can embrace smart development while also creating vibrant neighborhoods. And we can and must celebrate our community at the same time we are searching for creative solutions to our problems. And then lastly, it's time to act bold, be bold, and think bold. And I believe that is still the case, even in 2020, as we wrap up our service. Lastly, I just want to say thank you. And from the bottom of my heart, especially to this commission that I have had the pleasure to serve with, and also the former commission with Commissioner Holland and Commissioner Rhodes, I am so blessed to have had this opportunity in my lifetime to serve this community. And I want to say a big thank you to the general government staff. You know, we have been through some things. We've had dance parties. I was remembering those earlier today, Michelle and Lindsey Parrish, Lindsey Birdsong. We have had some great times together. Thank you all so much. And to Jim, it is such an amazing honor to get to work with you over these last several years. And I look forward to what's to come for you all. And I just also want to say good luck to the next commission. And also that we will be thinking about you, we will be praying for you, we will be lifting you up in our thoughts as you continue to make those tough but good decisions for our community. And with that, I think I'll wrap up by saying, you know, Paducah, we've always heard when we go to DC, that we punch above our weight. And there is no doubt about that we do. And I know that no matter what, we will continue to hold that standard high as a community. And so thank you all so much. And it has been a pleasure to serve.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that wraps up the commission awards. Do you want me to go ahead and down to the love awards now?
Please, yes.
Good. Thank you. If you guys could put up our first love award winner, it's going to be Amy Travis. The love awards we give out to our employees for living our values out every day. And these awards are nominated by their fellow employees. And the, the task to determine who gets the award is actually determined by the middle management team. And it's actually kind of like a, an interesting process they go through where they get the nominations and then they don't see who nominated. So basically, it's like a blind nomination. They see the person, but not who nominated, the individual. So it's really an interesting award process where the peers get to pick who gets the awards, not, not the supervisor, not the, not the director, but a peer gets to pick who, who earns these awards every year. And we give out one award per value. We have six values. And the first one we're going to recognize tonight is action oriented. That award winner was Amy Travis. For that value of action oriented, Paducah, believing that Paducah leads through responsiveness, positive forward momentum, and a thirst to always improve, there were nine people nominated. Amy Travis, from the Paducah Police Department Records Manager, as you can see there in that photo, and she's on the, on the call with us tonight, was nominated and selected for the win. In that nomination, it says, "I have been impressed by her go-getter attitude. I have never witnessed procrast- I have never witnessed procrastination or hesitation to tackle any project or assignment regardless of size, and she has modeled an excellent work ethic for records evidence department. With every assignment or need she addresses, she responds immediately and with dogged pursuit until final resolution, all with attention to every detail, a positive outlook, excuse me, and pleasant interactions. Due to these qualities, she successfully pursued and obtained two separate state grants for our department to convert paper records to digital files, resulting in an impressive efficiency when needing to search these old records." Amy, you're here with us tonight. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I just want to say how much I appreciate this and how humbled I feel. I was shocked. I was joking and said, "When I saw that you called me, I was like, oh no, what happened? What did I do? Am I losing my job?" I had no idea that it was something so wonderful. So I love where I work. I love... I'm originally from Nashville and Paducah has been my home for 21 years and I chose to stay here. So my life has changed a lot in the 21 years, but I still chose to stay because I really do love Paducah. And this is definitely my home now. I've always been a Tennessee girl in my heart, but I love where I am. And this Paducah is a wonderful town and I'm just humbled. And thank you very much for this honor.
Congratulations.
I really want a round of applause. Is that even...
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next value we have is customer experience. If you could pull that up. There you go. Customer experience is a value that says, "We believe in providing excellent service delivery for both our internal and external customers through a welcoming and respectful environment." We actually had 12 people nominated for customer experience award. The winner of the nomination, as you can see in that photo, is Alex Sherwood. She works for the customer experience. She's a customer experience representative for the customer experience department. She was actually nominated six times for this award, and she was also nominated for Every Person Matters Award. The nomination here that we're going to read tonight says, according to this person here, "I'm pretty sure if you look up customer experience in the dictionary, you will see Alex Sherwood's picture next to the definition. She has amazing way of going above and beyond to not only provide excellent service, but to add what I refer to as the wow factor to every interaction. When a customer approaches her with a question or concern, she adopts it as her personal mission to make sure they receive the information they need. It looks like her going an extra mile to make sure she tracks down the information. Sometimes it looks like her showing empathy towards people. Sometimes it's just her natural way of making people feel heard and important. She has multiple values every day, but altogether, it adds up to an amazing customer experience." Congratulations, Alex.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm immensely humbled and I can't thank you enough. I feel incredibly fortunate to be part of such a wonderful team. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, City Manager, I might add that if we had 12 people being nominated for this award, the customer experience department is in good hands for a while.
Amen.
Yep.
The next value is Every Person Matters. There's John Perkins. You guys recognize him. But this site says, "We believe that every member of Team Paducah is critically important as we strive to accomplish our mission and every person that chooses to live, work, and play in our city matters." There was 17 people nominated for the Every Person Matters value. The winner, as you can see in the photo, is Jonathan Perkins, our finance director. The nomination goes as such, "During the budget process and managing through the fiscal crisis created by the pandemic, John brought the theme of Stand Up Our Team to the beginning of the discussion. John understood the importance of being there for Team Paducah when Team Paducah needed stability and continuity the most. We could have looked at layoffs and/or forethose, but that was not our desire. Instead, we looked at other solutions, desiring to protect Team Paducah. I applaud John for this very important Every Person Matters approach. Congratulations, John."
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Jim called. I won't tell the public what I said at the time, but I was surprised that I'm getting an award. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
You deserve a round of applause, too. The effect is so limited on Zoom. I'm sorry, John. Congratulations.
Well deserved, John. Next up, fiscal responsibility. This value says, "We believe in the prudent stewardship of public funds." We had three people nominated for this award this year. And the winner, as you can see in the picture there, is Mary Worth. She serves as administrative assistant in Parks and Recreation. She was nominated twice for this award, and also she was nominated for the Every Person Matters Award. The nomination reads as such, "Mary embraces fiscal responsibility and has proven to be an effective person to ensure that the Parks and Recreation Department uses our funds wisely and appropriately. She has helped save money, plus looked for creative solutions to use our funds efficiently so we can provide quality parks, programs, and opportunities for the people of Paducah with the resources we have available. She follows up to make sure we are following the procedures necessary to be physically responsible on a daily basis." Congratulations, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I really enjoy my job and all the people that I work with. And I'd also like to congratulate the other love winners because they are all very well deserving.
Thank you, Mary.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, we have personal accountability. You guys recognize her as well. Personal accountability is a value that says, "We believe in holding each other accountable to ensure our core values are intentionally fulfilled as we strive to carry out our mission." Six people were nominated for personal accountability. The winner is Lindsay Parish, City Clerk and Customer Experience Director. She was also nominated for Every Person Matters. Here's what the nomination said, "Throughout 2020, Lindsay has received numerous voluminous open records requests from local media and various citizens, this occurring during times of great distress as we navigated uncharted waters of COVID-19. Some of these requests generated more than 500,000 emails. As you can see, this task was daunting. Oh, I forgot to mention, there was a timeline imposed by state statute for this records request. Despite the stress and burden placed upon Lindsay, she harnessed the weight of the challenge and would not allow requests to go unmet. She is the epitome of personal accountability with an exclamation point. She holds herself to a high standard of integrity and character to ensure the city is held to the same high standard. It is an honor serving with such a leader," again with an exclamation point. Congratulations, Lindsay.
Thank you so much. I was very shocked to receive this award. Thank you so much. And I just have to say that I am incredibly fortunate to have an amazing team to work with. None of what we do would be possible without Justin and Alex and Donna. And not, last but not least, Claudia Makes, who keeps our office running. I'm just very, very fortunate to work with some incredible people and I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Congratulations, Lindsay.
And our sixth love value to recognize tonight is solution driven. "We believe in proactively working together to discover innovative solutions that meet our current and future needs." This is a joint nomination, so we have two winners. There were 11 people nominated. The winners of this award are Michelle Smolin and Stephanie Swalzo. They were nominated together. Stephanie and Michelle worked tirelessly in putting together a well-defined compensation plan for the entire city. This plan is going to guide us over the next several years, and it puts us into a competitive position in the marketplace. This project was not an easy accomplishment. There are a lot of moving parts and variables. This included technical, emotional, and political data that had to be considered as decisions were made to come up with the most advantageous solution for the city. The end result puts us into a great place to better meet the needs of the team. This is an item that could have been unilaterally implanted without input from the team, but Stephanie and Michelle did not choose the path of least resistance. Rather, they chose to incorporate input from the team to ensure success. They both deserved to win this award. Congratulations, Stephanie and Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Well, I just thank you for this award and for being recognized. The compensation study wasn't about any one person, but it involved every city employee. And its success was the result of a group effort of all those involved.
And I wanted to say thank you as well. I'm a big believer in our organizational mission and values. So this is very exciting and similar to what Stephanie said, this was not any one person. We may have lived it day in and day out, but the success really came from the leadership team working to find solutions and helping us out. So, you know, I'm grateful to serve the community and then also very thankful to our PIO, Pam Spencer, who coordinates the love awards for our organization so we can recognize all the work that's happening. So thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Madam Mayor, that completes the love award presentation.
All right, great. I think we need one of those things like on the radio where you push the button and it has like a sound effect. I think that needs, if this continued, I think that'd be a good innovation for Zoom. Congratulations, everyone. You are well deserved. I actually just sent Pam Spencer a text message, Michelle, and said, "You knocked it out of the park when you came up with these love awards." So congratulations to Pam for her brainchild on these because how incredible is it to drive our values and also recognize people who are living those every day. So thank you all so much. Moving forward, it looks like we have a presentation. This is not necessarily an award, although I think we could call it an award. I know that John Perkins and his team calls it an award, and that is the formal report on our audit. Mr. Perkins, do you want to introduce our guest and get us started?
I do. See, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to bring myself back up here on screen or... Okay.
Either way, it's fine. We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Well, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. While the city's general fund spent $461,000 less than recognized revenues in fiscal 2020, it's important to understand how we managed to do so in such an awful economic environment. As part of the preparation process for the upcoming year, upcoming fiscal year, that is, 2021 budget, and during a worldwide pandemic earlier this year, last spring in 2020, we took unprecedented steps in an attempt to ensure that ongoing obligations would be met, employees paid, and citizens' services continued. One of those steps included transferring a little over $800,000 from other funds into the general fund. Without this transfer, the general fund would have fallen into deficit position for 2020. We must also be aware that revenue sources tied directly to the economy took a direct hit. With the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2020, the economic impact only affected the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. Fiscal year 2020 revenue was impacted due to economic forces outside our control, with the most painful revenue hit being payroll taxes, down nearly 1% from the prior fiscal year. This is nearly $400,000 less than budget expectations. Remember, that was only the fourth quarter, not the entire year. The more severe financial economic impact to revenues will be seen in the current fiscal year 2021. On the expenditure side, we also took preventive measures as well. By the time we were in the pandemic, three quarters of the fiscal year had already taken place, which meant we couldn't unspend past expenses. The city manager froze open employee positions, closed facilities, eliminated all travel, and reduced spending to absolute essentials for the balance of the fiscal year. These are still in effect. We stayed under authorized appropriation levels for the fiscal year 2020. As much as it pains me to say it, I'm afraid there's much more economic fiscal pain to come in fiscal 2021. Having said all that, does anyone have any questions before I turn the presentation over to David Hampton, CPA with Kemper CPAs, our independent financial auditor? Hearing none, David. Cheers.
John, I appreciate the introduction. Most of the Commissioners know me by now. I'm David Hampton. I'm a partner with Kemper CPA Group. I'm here to present our report on the City of Paducah's comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending June 30th, 2020. First off, I'd like to thank John and all the accounting staff, Audra. This was an unusual year this year, trying to do an audit with the pandemic and all. And I'd like to say they've really stepped up, worked very hard with us so that we could get this done. And I really want to appreciate all their work, as well as the rest of the city's employees. Anyone that we work with, another way to work with us. And we really appreciate that. That means a lot to us. And that comes from you all, Council, bringing that about. So, so now I'd like to present your audit report. Your report consists of introductory section, a financial section, which includes our auditors' report, the management discussion and analysis, basic financial statements and notes, and the required and other supplemental schedules. In addition, there's the physical section, and then there's a single audit section, which includes all reports required by governmental auditing standards and the uniform guidance. So that kind of gives an overview of your comprehensive annual financial report. So first, we'll go to our independent auditor's report, which has been brought up on the slide. In the second, third paragraph, we discuss the responsibility and our responsibility issue for auditors. As noted, the financial statements are presented of the responsibility of the city and our responsibility is expressing an opinion on these statements based upon our audit. As noted in the sixth paragraph at the bottom of the page, it exposes our opinion. And as noted, we've determined these statements are fairly presented in all material respects, known as unmodified or clean opinion. In addition, on the next slide, as noted in the first paragraph, your annual comprehensive annual financial report also includes required management discussion and analysis and pension and other post-employment benefit supplemental informations on pages 13 through 28 of the CAFER and 101 through 108. Because this information is not audited, accordingly, we do not express an opinion on this information. In addition, as noted in the ninth paragraph, we did apply auditing procedures to the other supplemental information included on pages 109 through 128 and the schedule of federal expenditures and rewards on pages 149 to 150, and determine that these statement schedules are fairly presented in all material respect. And then as noted in the 10th paragraph, we did not audit the introductory or specific sections. So accordingly, we do not express an opinion on this information included in the CAFER. Our next report is required under the governmental auditing standards. On the next slide, this is our report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance and other matters as required under governmental auditing standards. As noted in the second paragraph, our responsibility is to consider your internal control over financial reporting for the purpose of planning and performing our audit, but not for the purpose of expressing an opinion. So accordingly, we are not expressing an opinion on the city's internal controls. With that in mind, as noted in the fourth paragraph, we did not identify any efficiencies as material weaknesses which are required to be reported under governmental auditing standards. However, material weaknesses may exist and have not been identified. In addition, as noted in the fifth paragraph, as part of obtaining reasonable assurance whether the city's financial statements are free of material misstatements, we also perform tests of compliance with certain laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. As noted, we noted no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under governmental auditing standards. Our last report is on pages 153 and 154, which is on the next slide. This is on page 177 and 178 of the CAFER, the PDF of the CAFER. And this is required under the U.S. Office of Management and Uniform Guidance Compliance Supplement. This report discloses any noncompliance, if any, regarding the city's compliance... This report discloses any non-compliance, if any, regarding the city's compliance that could have a direct and material effect with the provisions of the city's major programs or grant agreements, your federal award grants. As noted in the second paragraph, compliance with requirements of the laws, regulations, contracts, and grants applicable to federal programs is the responsibility of management. Our responsibility is to consider the city's compliance for the purpose of planning and performing our tests and to obtain reasonable assurance. The city has complied with the types of compliance requirements which could have a direct and material effect on your major federal programs. That in mind is noted in the fifth paragraph, we have determined that the city has complied in all material respects for the type of compliances that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major federal programs. In addition, as noted in the sixth paragraph, the city is responsible for effective internal controls over compliance. And as noted in the, in the second paragraph on the next slide, we noted no instances of non-compliance or other matters required to be reported under the uniform guidance. So that concludes our, uh, presentation of your audit report, of your CAFER's required reports. Um, once again, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to serve your organization. Uh, and at this time, I'd be welcome, any questions that you may have about your comprehensive annual financial report or our reports?
I don't have any.
Don't have any questions, comments? Thank you, David, so much for your work on this. And I, I, I cannot pass up the opportunity to say what I've said probably 100 times. Uh, and that's just thank you to John and your team for, um, the incredible, above and beyond work that you all do to make sure that our taxpayer dollars are being watched, uh, and being. I am going, I actually just pulled up the CAFER. Again, I love reading the CAFER. I know that sounds really nerdy, but I love it. It is such a, it is where all of the meat happens. It's, it's, you can tell where we've been and where we're going, um, in the CAFER. And so, John, I just read on our website, I forgot, we were only one of 14 cities in Kentucky that actually do a CAFER. Uh, this is completely voluntary. It's completely opt-in. It's not required. So the fact that your team wants to put together a binder about this thick of all of the city's ins and outs, I'm just in awe of that. And thank you for your commitment.
Very much, Mayor. You mentioned something about the website. For those other nerds that want to go out and read it, you go to our website, that's www.paducaky.gov. We have all of those CAFERs or audits, all the way back, I think, to the year 2000, 2000, I believe. And it's all there.
I will say I've probably read five of them when I first got into office. I think you might know when I was doing that because I was coming to your office a whole lot, asking a whole lot of questions. Um, but I, just again, thank you because it is incredible that you all, first of all, are that transparent with our public because that, to me, is what that is a signal of. Not only are you making sure that you have good controls on the taxpayer funds, but you're also being completely transparent with where, um, those funds are going. So.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's a, it's not just a John Perkins thing. Matter, matter of fact, most of the credit goes to people like Audra Herndon and Stacey Young and all those folks on the crew.
Absolutely.
I just could sign the stuff, you know, I just.
Well, send our best to them, please.
They're listening right now.
Okay, good. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate you. Uh, anyone else have any questions, comments you want to make before we move on? All right. Thank you, David. Sorry, we didn't have an award to give you tonight. Uh, we appreciate your work for us.
Uh, just the opportunity to work with y'all's organization is my reward. We, we certainly appreciate it and look forward to working with y'all in the future. So wish all of you all the best.
Great. Have a good Christmas.
You too. Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Y'all stay safe.
All right, you too.
Bye-bye.
Okay, I'm going to move us into, uh, the consent agenda. And items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests. Does anyone have anything they'd like to remove tonight for a separate discussion? Okay, with that, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval, please.
Repentance for the December 8th, 2020 Paducah Board of Commissioners Meeting. Receive and file documents, reappointment of Glenn Denton and Kelm Burgeard, and appointment of Sarah Bradley to replace Linda Curtis, whose term has expired, to the Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau. These terms shall expire December 31st, 2023. Personnel actions, a municipal order authorizing an additional payment to young blood excavation contractors in the amount of $1,400 for meeting all early completion deadlines related to construction of the PEC education trail. A municipal order accepting the bid of Finley Fire Equipment Incorporated for sale to the city of one pumper truck in an amount of $515,360 for use by the Paducah Fire Department and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. A municipal order authorizing the city to apply for a Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act grant through the Department of Local Government in the amount of $559,821 for reimbursements for the salaries of Paducah police officers and firefighters beginning June 4th, 2021, uh, beginning June 4th for the entire allotment, accepting any grant funds awarded by the Department of Local Government and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order amending Municipal Order Number 2398 entitled A Municipal Order Approving and Adopting the Group Life Insurance Benefits Proposal with Mutual of Omaha and a total annual group premium amount of $44,453.40 for the employees of the City of Paducah and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same to remove the preferred choice voluntary short-term disability and voluntary long-term disability.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, city clerk, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
I think it would be appropriate just to say thank you, not that they're going to see it, but to our federal delegation for helping with those CARES Act funds, and then specifically to, um, our state government for getting those funds to us, um, fairly rapidly. Uh, this is our second round of asking for those funds, um, because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And, and, and so it's really appreciative, um, I know, for us and, and, uh, going back to our budgets, um, to make sure that we are meeting those obligations. Um, I'm going to ask the city clerk, we're going to move forward, and ask the city clerk to read, um, item 3A, please.
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah Encouraging the Incoming Board of Commissioners to Relief Options Related to Alcohol Licensing Renewal Fees."
So moved. Thank you. There you go. Second. Commissioner McElroy.
Yes, yes. I, uh, I think this is a time our restaurants are really hurting as they were forced to shut down during probably their best two weeks of the year. And just want to encourage, listen to them, and, um, there's not a lot this commission can do at this point, but we would encourage them to think about at least delaying the license that is, licenses that are due at the end of January, if they could have till March. Um, that would at least let everyone see what's going to happen. We don't even know what things are going to look like when we get beyond these holidays. We hope things will be a lot better as the vaccine, uh, is distributed, but it may not be. We don't know, but they may need more help than that. But it's just the, the desire, I think, of this commission to say to the next one, please don't forget these people that have served our community so well. We all enjoy eating out in Paducah. It's a, it's a great attraction to our area, and they have been hit very, very, very hard.
I agree. Thank you for bringing this, uh, forward tonight and, um, for thinking about the restaurants. Does anyone have any other comments or questions before we vote? No? Okay. Uh, city clerk, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And I'll ask the city clerk to read item 4A, please.
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Amending Ordinance Number 2020-6-8641 Authorizing the City of Paducah to Execute a Forgivable Loan Agreement with Sprocket Incorporated in an Amount Up To $900,000 to Partially Fund the Construction Cost of a Renovative Facility That Will Be Used for the Creation of New Startup Businesses and Job Opportunities Within the City of Paducah." Execute the other agreements and documents there that are a part thereof. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the execution of a forgivable loan agreement with Sprocket Incorporated in an amount up to $900,000 for a portion of the construction cost, systems and improvements of facilities at the Sprocket location, together with loan guarantee agreement and other agreements, instruments, or certification which may be necessary to accomplish said forgivable loan. Further, this ordinance authorizes the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021. As adopted by Ordinance Number 2020-6-8641, be amended to transfer $900,000 from debt service undesignated fund balance 3,000 to general fund note receivable account 1,000-101055.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Um, so we did hear, uh, at length about this project last meeting. Um, does anyone have any questions or comments tonight before we take a vote?
I do, Mayor. The, um, um, first of all, let me say that the, um, uh, has shown the type of effort to, uh, solidify themselves here in Paducah. We talked about the times that we're living in, folks are looking to move to, um, smaller communities, and Paducah is right there in the forefront of that. Uh, to take it a step further, Codifys has recognized that, uh, there's some, there's some awesome things going on here within the city. Uh, that goes without saying. However, um, given the fact that we just heard from our financial, uh, director, and he went over a couple of, a couple of things that, that popped out. Uh, our, um, our payroll taxes was hit hard, uh, $400,000, uh, with the COVID and the, and the shutdown. Um, we had, uh, we had a balance, but we had to, uh, we had to hit some reserve funds to get that done. At a benefit of those reserve funds, our budget would not have been balanced. Uh, so I'm, I'm looking at, uh, what the 900, almost a million dollars, uh, going to this, uh, this, uh, this organ, this company, and again, they're a great company. But I'm looking at what the, uh, uh, the county, uh, combined with the library was, uh, I think it was $280,000. So I, I think we should give, uh, some funds to, uh, uh, to Sprocket because I think that would send the wrong message. Uh, but, uh, almost a million dollars and we talked, the, uh, Jonathan talked about, um, we don't know exactly how this is going to turn out. Uh, Commissioner McElroy just said it, it could be great or could not be. So with that type of, uh, forecast out there, I think, um, from a commissioner's standpoint, for myself, it would be, um, it would be a not wise to, to transfer almost a million dollars, uh, to this, uh, to this company, uh, $140,000 with the $280,000 that the county and the library has, uh, put up. That's $420,000. That will start construction. Um, we have a very given community. That is not, uh, money that you can just sneeze at. I don't want to leave the, uh, the citizens here as we go out in a situation where if we're a little bit more reserved, uh, that's $760,000, uh, that's left. Uh, they're going to find a place for it. Uh, there's never, um, uh, there's never a situation where, uh, you can't put money to help out here or there. So, uh, again, I don't want anybody to think that I'm not for this project. It's a great project and the players, uh, in those projects, people for themselves. But as far as transferring almost a million dollars right now during this time, um, I don't think that, uh, uh, that's a wise thing to do. Uh, giving them, uh, funds, uh, to $140,000 combined with the $280,000 that the city, uh, that the county and, uh, library, McCracken County Library is, is given. I think that's, uh, $420,000. That's, that's a nice, that's a nice sum of money, uh, to show them that we are supporting them, uh, but we got other things on the table that as a municipal that we have to take care of. And I, I think most reasonable folks would understand that and wouldn't take that as a, as a snub to the great work that they're doing.
Commissioner Abraham, I would, I, with all due respect, I mean, I, I look at this as an economic development investment that now's the time to make. I mean, we have to do what we can to be bringing people here and to be bringing jobs. You know, we talked about, um, how can we get more people to move here? We just invested in a contract to try to recruit people to Paducah. These are the types of activities and jobs that people are looking for in communities where they go. We've seen that with what happened in Cape Girardeau. It is a proven model that has worked there. And Sprocket, we've been helping them for a year and a half, almost two years, to try to get launched and to find a home. And so I think now is the time to do that. These are from the proceeds from another economic development project, an unexpected, uh, an economic development project by the sale of the building, uh, that we owned with Genova. And so this is money that we didn't expect to have anyway. And now that we have it, this is a way to put it back into our community in a really good way that will help us in the future, help create jobs during the camp. All, all of our campaigns, we all talked about the need to create more jobs. I mean, you hear that every time from everybody that's running, that that's what you're hearing. People want jobs. They want better paying jobs. We have a poverty issue here. When you talk about the grant-funded coding boot camps that, um, will be provided by Sprocket in a new home where they're desperate to have, you talk about raising the average salary for a person after that program. The average salary is $60,000 per year with benefits. And that's, they've raised the money to help provide these boot camps. Now I think it's time, and it's our responsibility to help them find a home, to create more jobs, to create more growth. It's in a section of town that is, you know, really growing and has a lot of excitement. It's the perfect place for them. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to take something that we've done with economic development and provide it back into economic development.
This, this is great. I, I agree with everything that you said. And it's, it's really, it's really exciting when you talk about, when you look at financially where the city is and you have $900,000 that you weren't expecting. You're like, wow, okay, we can use that fund, but wait a minute. We have a company over here that's, we talked about jobs, I agree. Well, you know what? We can help them out also. I'm not talking about cutting them out. I understand the money, the job, the rate of pay. Uh, those are tech jobs. Those are high-skill jobs. Absolutely. I agree with that. But again, this, these are funds that, uh, not only that we can take some, help those guys out, but also put those funds back in the, uh, the city carpet. So, uh, I agree with what you said. I, I totally agree. But I think, uh, we, we don't have to do all of it.
I'll, I just want to make sure that it's clear, um, just for the record, Commissioner. Um, the city, the county, and the library, you might remember, we all committed, uh, $200,000 each back about two years ago when, um, the Sprocket started working with the state on trying to get the funds to build out the, the space then. Um, those funds have, those funds in the county and the library are still committed. They have put together $400,000 into the Sprocket project. Some of it was actually re-designated to help leverage a $1.4 million investment from the DRA, USDA, and a few other sources for workforce. So even though together, as you mentioned, they're putting in $280,000 for the space build out, they have put in way more than that, um, to this project as partner. So just want to make sure that that's clear, um, and that they are bringing, they have been bringing funds to the table. Um, I also just mentioned to you, uh, you know, on a construction project, you rarely can get, if a, if a construction project costs X amount of money to get finished, there's really not a halfway. Um, I think that would be true right now, and maybe your, your idea would be relevant if we were talking about a program where maybe they were going to hire two people to run the program, but now they can only hire one person because of the funds. But with a construction project, you either do it or you don't do it, um, from that perspective. So I don't know that a halfway point is necessarily, um, available right now um, for this specific part of the project. Um, and then also, you mentioned the payroll tax. You know, this are, this agreement has milestones built into it. And if Sprocket does not meet the milestones, And if Sprocket does not meet the milestones that, that are job creation requirements, then they don't get that part of the loan forgiven. And they will have to return this money to the city. So we're not giving this money freely, um, as a commission. I believe that Tom Quiller has put together in our city manager a very strong agreement that has a lot of controls on it to make sure that we're not just giving money away and then those jobs are not created. Their, one of their milestones is to get to 59 jobs. And as Commissioner Wilson said, that's 59 jobs at $60,000 a year plus. Because some of those tech jobs, and I'm in the industry, believe me, are, are six figures. So when we talk about payroll tax, we will be recovering the payroll tax by making this investment. It just might not be happening next year, but it is an investment into the future. So, um, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. And I, I also understand that, uh, when you, when you pitch it and you draw it up on the board, it's a touchdown every time. Uh, but life happens and we, if we've learned anything this year, we, we understood that. So, um, again, I, again, I think the, uh, uh, it's a great project. I think there are other partners out there, uh, besides us and the county and the library, uh, for this specific construction part of this, uh, uh, of this deal. And I, I think we would be, uh, we would be wise to, uh, incorporate some of those other, other partners out there to get this done because this is a community-wide effort. This is a community-wide, uh, 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 will benefit this, the whole community. So I, I think there's other folks out there who understand what we're doing. Uh, we're not, again, we're not saying we're not going to give anything, uh, but, uh, to, uh, to stand by us and understand what we're doing. So those are my thoughts on this project.
I think we all take notice of the success that Codify has had in Cape Girardeau, Missouri. And I think approximately five years, they've created over 200 jobs with over $30 million in private investment in Cape Girardeau. And they want to replicate that in Paducah. And the view is that, the viewpoint is that there's, uh, potential for greater success here than even what they've had in Cape. Uh, so I think, uh, you know, the return on the investment with the safeguards, it's, it's a wise move, uh, for our people, for our community to try to create some good paying jobs here, to keep our young people here and attract those, uh, in other parts of the country that are looking to make a move to land them here in Paducah, Kentucky.
Well, for those of us who went to Cape Girardeau and took the time to go over there and see Codify, I think you could see the excitement that was being built in that community. It was very apparent. And also I think it's important, Commissioner Abraham, to remember that we have been very good stewards of the city's money. And we've been putting back 12% of our general fund for reserves every year. That helped us, though having those reserves absolutely did help us. But it is time that we invest in our community. And this is investing in a high-tech careers for our community and things that will, businesses that will come here and bring people here to buy homes, to do services, to be, help grow our population. It's time for us to do this as an investment in our community.
Yeah, and I'm not saying not to do it, not to invest, just not at that clip.
I don't think we can do it halfway. I think they, they have known what they need to build out. And it's either we do, we step up and we help them and we put the money in for that or it's not going to happen. And we have that money from the economic development project. I think it's time to move forward and make that move.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Harless?
Yes. Okay, I'm going to get my agenda back out here and ask the city clerk to read item five A, please.
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners To Introduce An Ordinance Entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing And Directing The Mayor To Execute Change Order Number One With Jim Smith Contracting LLC To Increase The Contract By $37,585.10 For The Greenway Trail Phase Five Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows: This ordinance authorizes the execution of Change Order Number One For An Increase In The Net Amount Of $37,585.10 With Jim Smith Contracting LLC For A New Total Contract Cost Of $516,935.60 For The Greenway Trail Phase Five Project.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Murphy, I think is on this item.
Madam Mayor, uh, Commissioner and City Manager, I'm, Steve's got me blocked out of video here. Uh, can you bring me back up, Steve?
There he is.
There we go. Um, yes, I'm, I'm bringing this to you. Um, this, as you all know, we've had a ribbon cutting and we've closed that project out. But some, some of what you don't know is that when we started that project, that was the old federal materials side, as I shared with you when we had the ribbon cutting project and our, um, program. And, um, basically when we started that job, everywhere we dug, there was concrete. That being federal materials, when they came down there, they wasted all of their concrete in the gorge. So every time we started digging, we were running into concrete. And we're supposed to be able to plant things later during our build grant. So we're like going, if we dig all this concrete up, we're going to cost ourselves about $300,000 to put soil back in. So what we did is we actually raised the project about 18 inches to provide a soil base to go over all that concrete. In doing so, you had, you noticed a, um, change order reduction of about $65,000 uh, on that change order. And then for what we did to put back, to make it where we could grow plants and whatnot, uh, we had to add a whole bunch of soil on top of that. So the end result of that was a $37,000 increase to the north of the original contract.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Sounds like we're still to the good.
Well, actually, we finished the green, where the funds will come from, and I needed to say this. On the Greenway Trail, this is all associated with the Greenway Trail, we actually finished the Bob Leaper Bridge for $40,000 less than what was funded. So we'll take money from the Bob Leaper Bridge project and cover this delta on this project. So it's a, it's a revenue neutral, uh, position and both projects were on trails.
Great news. Okay, if there are no further questions, I'm going to move on and ask the city manager if he has any comments.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just went to, uh, again, uh, send my appreciation for this board, for the alderman members. I do appreciate each and every one of you. And also, not to be left out, Commissioner Wilson, I, I do appreciate you as well. It's been a pleasure working with you for the last, uh, you know, uh, two and a half years. I look forward to serving you in January. And also Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Any comments from the Commissioners tonight?
Yes, Commissioner Wilson, it's been, it's been an honor working with you. You're a great lady. And, uh, even though I get really irritated at Alabama for winning all the time, a winner's a winner, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Abraham. Uh, it's been my pleasure to work with you the past eight years. And, uh, we've been through a lot of things, a lot of work together. So I wish you the very best in the future. Uh, Commissioner Watkins, I always kind of laughed. I felt like in a way I took your place when you ran for his house. I ran for a commission and was elected. And then now I got to serve with you, uh, as you came back to the commission for those, these past two years. So, uh, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. Our four years, no, two, right? And then Commissioner McElroy, I really didn't know you. And we had a, a breakfast, but writers, you decided to run and I got to know you and during the campaign. And then these past two years, I've really grown to, uh, just feel a friends, very much of a friendship with you. I will certainly miss your prayers, uh, that you lead every week in our, our, every meeting. And, um, I may just have to call you to listen to those again sometime.
It's been my pleasure. It's been a real joy to work with you.
And, uh, Mayor Harless, it's been great to work with you these past four years. Uh, you've been a great leader. And I know your heart has just been, uh, so dedicated to this community. So, um, thank you all for your service. Uh, I look forward to maintaining a close friendship with you. You guys know I will be calling you and asking you for advice. Um, I know Mayor Harless, well, all of you are, will be here in this community. So it's just been my honor to have worked with you and, uh, look forward to opportunities to do that in the past. Um, I had, we did present a plaque to Mayor Harless earlier today from the Paducah Chamber for her four years of service. It's laying over there on the floor. I meant to pick it up so I could hold it up again. But, um, thank you, you have been really involved in so many organizations, uh, on behalf of the city and have really put your heart and soul into it. And, um, the energy level that, uh, Judge Klammer talked about is true. Everybody has seen that in you very, so thank you to all of you and best wishes, Merry Christmas. It's been my honor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes.
Two things I forgot, I apologize. Uh, one, we do have the, uh, uh, ribbon cutting for the, uh, Peck Trail Nature Edition here this Thursday afternoon. I believe it's at two o'clock, rescheduled time from 11 to two. Just invite you guys out for that. And also, uh, that will be kind of like Mark Thompson's last hurrah, you know? Cause Mark Thompson, after almost 20 years of service, uh, with the city as our personal rect directors, of course, hanging up his cleats, if you will, boots, if you will, on December 31st. And we are having a, uh, a kind of a send off in Mark's, uh, fashion and style, a meeting down there at the farmer's market, uh, uh, building and then walking the, uh, Greenway Trail Saturday morning beginning at nine o'clock. Would like to invite you guys for that as well. So keeping socially distant, mask on, of course. But, uh, uh, Mark thought this would be one way to kind of walk and reminisce about his, uh, time with the city and his accomplishments.
Jim, can you come down at nine and just wave everybody off on the walk or?
Yes, you sure can, yes.
Okay.
There'll be just a, there'll be a brief ceremony, uh, for, for Mark there and then the walk will begin, yes.
Okay. And then I think it's important to note the time change for Thursday because the funeral service for Commissioner Coleman is at 11 on, uh, Thursday. And so the ground, the green, uh, ribbon cutting was moved to two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Great. Any other comments from the Commissioners before we move on?
I would like to make just real brief comments, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wilson, it's been great serving with you also. And I appreciate your, uh, friendship and your wisdom, your leadership that you provide in this community. You're a great leader. And, uh, I think the city's going to be in great hands with you and, uh, the incoming, uh, commission. And I look forward to watching, uh, the great things that y'all will do for the city of Paducah and the residents. And, uh, enjoyed serving with the entire commission. Been a great two years. God bless you all. And Merry Christmas to Paducah and McCracken County. Goodbye.
That's great. Thank you so much. Any other comments tonight?
Well, I don't think I'll ever say the pledge like I've said it through these two years. Uh, standing in front of Commissioner Abraham when he says the Pledge of Allegiance is like no other. And, uh, I will, Commissioner, really will. He loves his country, he loves his city, he loves his family and his friends. And I, I appreciate that.
I'll put it on tape and send it to you.
Okay. Cause we're going to be at the riverfront for Fourth of July this year. So I want to hear, hear you sing the Star Spangled Banner.
We got you. We got you.
Commissioner Wilson, you have been a true friend. And, uh, and, and no one knows more about business and recruitment into this community than you do. And you are a star at that. And I appreciate and applaud that so much. You work so hard. And, and, uh, Commissioner Watkins, you have been a real inspiration and encourager and a friend. And I have so much appreciation for all your service to our state. And I, I thank you so much. And Mayor Harless, you are smart, you are hardworking and God has great things in store for you. And I cannot wait to see what the next step is. So God bless everyone, God bless our community and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I, you know, I really do, um, appreciate you all. It, it, it's kind of interesting, the last, like, you know, what is it? Five minutes of this meeting, the last meeting that we will be together. Um, it almost seems kind of surreal in a lot of ways. Commissioner Watkins, you know, I have watched you lead, um, in our state, in our community for so long. I'll remember, I'll never forget actually driving to a democratic function somewhere in a different county, talking to you on the phone about your ambitions and hearing about your thoughts of running for commission and, and being excited to serve with you, um, hand in hand after watching you serve the state. So thank you for your humility. That is the word that comes to mind, Commissioner, when I think of you. And you have taught me that, um, and you have shown me how to do that in leadership.
Thank you. Bless you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Commissioner Abraham, um, you know, people have said over and over again, thinking back to Jim's comments about you and how much, how committed you are, um, to this community. And there is no doubt that that is the case. Um, I appreciate you, I appreciate, gosh, your long-serving time. I was thinking about this earlier when they were giving you your plaque. Um, Commissioner Coleman, we recognize as the longest-serving commissioner. I know you've got to be up there really close to that. Um, so you're dedicated.
You got it really fast. You got it really fast.
That's meant to be a comment, uh, of praise because for the little four years that I got to experience, um, the goods and the bads and the uglies of doing the job. Um, and you have continued to put your name on that ballot over and over again, knowing, um, that this is a hard job. So thank you, sir, for your service as well.
Thank you for your leadership, Mayor.
I appreciate that. Uh, Commissioner McElroy, I think we both agree that this was an unlikely friendship that we formed. Um, but it is a beautiful friendship that I am so, so thankful for. And I am so excited to see where our friendship goes, um, in the next chapter of our lives. So thank you for your demonstration of kindness and compassion. And I agree, I think I need you to record the prayer and Commissioner McElroy to record the pledge. Play every now and then. So thank you. It's been an honor to serve with you.
It's been great. It's been wonderful.
And Commissioner Wilson, you know, I'm going to cry on this one, but I, I, I am going to tell you that the one thing that I think about the most about you is you are always a yes and person. And you have shown me that when you are a yes and person, the things that we can accomplish together are incredible. I'm, I'm just thinking back to that build grant when we lost and you and I got on the phone and we were like, we're not letting this team give up. We are not letting this team give up. Jim shaking his head yes, because he was one of those that we had to convince. And you and I went on a campaign to sell this to people to get us to apply again. And we won. That will forever be the example that you have shown me. And I will take that with me into everything that I do in the future. Your perseverance is absolutely beautiful. So I didn't mean to cry this much. That was unintended and not staged. Um, so thank you so much for your demonstration of leadership to me.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm, uh,
I know, don't, don't show yourself like I am. Um, and I just want to finally say to the team, um, I called a few names out earlier. It would take us all night to, to talk about our team and whole. Um, but that is exactly what we have here in the city of Paducah. And that is a team, um, from our city manager to every single leader, um, that we have in a director seat, to all of the middle management and to all the staff. You all have inspired me beyond. We have ideas at this level, at the commission level, and you have to turn them into reality. Um, and, and to watch you do that, to watch you take this abstract thing and make it real, um, has been truly inspiring to me. So thank you all from the bottom of my heart, uh, for all of the commitment and service that you also offer to our city. I think I'm going to wrap up now before I keep, uh, the waterworks going. Uh, we do not have public comment tonight, so I am going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.